Good evening, everybody. Good evening. All right, welcome to the June 13th Board of Education Regular Meeting. Could we have a roll call, please?
Here.
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 Here, thank you. All right, the first item on the agenda is written communication. Dr. Beavis, do we have any?
We have no written communication at this time.
Okay, thank you. All right, the next item is Item 4 Information. And the first item is Student Recognition for Girls Soccer, IHSA Fourth Place, Boys and Girls Track and Field.
So I'm going to introduce Chris Levatino, our Athletic Director. I'll just say that we have had quite a banner year with our spring sports this year. And so fortunately, we have some coaches and athletes here that we're going to really be able to celebrate. I know you've probably had some celebrations already, but we're going to celebrate a little bit with you as well. So, Mr. Levatino.
Great, thank you, Dr. Witherspoon, and thank you to the board for having us here tonight. As we all know, the past few years have been extremely difficult for all of us, and especially for the the spring sport athletes here at ETHS. They lost their entire 2020 season, and they had last year's season condensed. That's why it's my pleasure to be able to celebrate our spring season state trophy winners and state champions with you tonight. And tonight, we are celebrating the champions from this year and last year, so we've got kind of a large group. So I'm going to be brief and ask our coaches to be as brief as they can as well with their introductions. I think that will be hard for some of them, but we're we're going to try. So our first honoree is girls soccer, who won four championships this season and brought home the second state trophy in the history of their sport at ETHS. And to share a little bit more on their accomplishments and introduce the players that were able to be here tonight is our head coach, Stacy Salgado. Coach Salgado.
I have Coach Kalix, he's going to join me up here as well because he's been a crucial part of our team. First, we want to thank you for having us. I was a former ETHS alum, it's great to be back. I haven't been in one of these meetings in a long time, so it's good. But we are here because we are here to honor our soccer team. They have accomplished big things this season, like Chris mentioned, all the championships that we have. We are a record of 21, 4-1. A CSL in the conference, 5-0 record, which got us the championship title. For us, 89 goals, so we've got some goal scorers here. Only 19 against, so if you know anything about soccer, that's a lot. Ranked number one in the sectional, beat out teams such as Nutria, Loyola, Libertyville to take us downstate. Unfortunately, you know, the end of the season was not as we had hoped, but it was an amazing season in all, and cannot be more proud of this group of girls. So excited to have a lot of them with us, not all of them unfortunately. It is summer, and this is their first week off of soccer. We just ended not even a week ago, so they finally took a little break. So a lot of them are actually out of town, but we're very happy to have a couple with us. So I'm going to actually introduce them for you. So we've got Jocelyn Lee.
So if you guys actually want to stand up and get in a line as she calls her name, and then we're going to have you proceed.
We got Braylon, you and you.
Let's get them all introduced, Chris. Let's get them all introduced first, and then we'll have them go around so that we don't miss their names.
Lily Scher. Ariel Kite. Jordan Kediri. Tate Lucas. Molly Riley. Anna Bergman. Bridget Mulvihill. And then lastly, with us is Nala Dominguez.
Okay, and as Mr. Levatino was now saying, you're not quite done. We're going to invite all of you to come around the horseshoe here so we can give you some fist bumps or elbow bumps or handshakes. And when you get to the Board President, we have a pin here commemorating you being honored by the Board of Education.
All right, great, thank you very much.
Yes, yes, yes. You guys are the best. And you even get a pin. You guys had quite a season. You had great coaches. Believe me, we are, we and I are thrilled.
You get one too. Thank you.
Let's give it up for our girls soccer program one more time. So our our track and field teams have always been the backbone of ETHS Athletic Department, winning a combined 15 state championships between the boys and the girls programs. In the past two seasons, these two programs combined to win five state championships for individuals and relay teams. To tell you about our boys' success, I'd like to introduce you to head coach, Don Mitchell.
Board of Education, Superintendent, Administration, I've been a part of this wonderful institution since 1980, coaching boys' track and field. Had seven state champion relay teams and five individual state champions. But I've never, ever been associated with two powerful young men who were not only state champions, but along the way were undefeated. Give it up to them. Khalil didn't get a chance to stand on the podium at state, that's a special honor. And if you could have seen Matt Klass, he represented the orange and blue well when he got up there. He just was showered with it, he just he just loved it. So this is important for Khalil to be honored by Evanston and the Board of Education. Right now Khalil is a finished his freshman year at Iowa. Khalil, correct me, you were the number one freshman high hurdler in the Big Ten, is that correct? The other thing about the high hurdles for men, they raise them three more inches. So in high school, he was a 39-inch hurdler, now he's a 42-inch hurdler. And so many high school state champions don't make the adjustment, so they either change events or they leave the sport. So Khalil has put himself in a good shape. He's the number three under 20 hurdler in the nation, is that correct?
Wow.
In the world. So Evanston High School does something right, because for him to be that successful at the next level. They each got there in a different path, came from from different backgrounds. The diversity of Evanston is standing behind me. And the two things I remember most about them, and I'm going to cut it short because my boss is pulling at my coat tail. Every day they came to practice, and they had this work ethic to be great. It was a plus for the team and a minus for the team, because the team, some of the team members viewed them as superstars that they'll never reach. And so that's kind of sad. Others viewed it as an opportunity to possibly get to that level. The other thing that was outstanding about them was their positive attitude. No matter what happened, at the state meet, we had these beautiful white uniforms, I know, Coach, we had these beautiful white uniforms on, and it was our first time wearing them. And Matt Klass was down to his last jump at 6'4", and you know, those competitors that he had beaten throughout the year were hoping he'd miss. It's his last jump, I remember I went to the back, I couldn't witness it, I said, we'll never put those uniforms on again. He goes up, goes over the bar at 6'4" by a large amount, goes on to win the state championship. So it's little small things, yeah, that get it done. Khalil going into last year being undefeated, they were at him too, and his block slipped in the 110 highs, nobody cares about that. But he he was able to collect himself and go on and win. The same thing in the intermediate, he came off the curve in fifth place, they weren't even mentioning his name. His parents and the family was down at the finish line, all in orange and blue, and he just powered past everybody and won. So they both had their challenges, and from those challenges, they grew into success. So Matt will be at Auburn next year, jumping, and he's also a pilot. And Khalil will be with the Under 20 Worlds and going to summer school and training at Iowa. So, thank you, Sal.
No, I'm going to shake your hand. Congratulations, good to see you. Thank you. Congratulations, wow. Coach, you've got to be proud.
Congratulations again to boys track and field. As Ms. Rodino just pointed out, it may be that new blue track that simulates simulates the the exact color of the blue track down at Eastern Illinois University, so our kids are comfortable down there. The anchor to our spring sports state celebration relay tonight is the head coach of our girls' track and field program, who has brought home enough hardware to take up an entire hallway, literally, at ETHS, Fannie Gunter.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to congratulate the girls soccer team. That's outstanding job, young ladies. On the 50th year, the 50th anniversary of Title IX, it's quite an honor for you to open that up with a state trophy. State trophies are very hard to attain in any sport. This is the girls, out of all our sports, our 28th girls state trophy, so congratulations to you, young ladies. Now you don't start it, you've got to keep it up. Last year was abbreviated year due to the COVID situation, we had a group of young ladies and coaches who really hung in there. And it's different type of dynamic as far as the track season with no indoor season, but the young ladies really did an outstanding job. Those young ladies we had represent were state champions in the 4x200 meter relay team. I believe Jasmine Wright's here, Ricky, Jackie, where's Dawson? All right, would you four ladies stand up, please? Come up here. This group of young ladies brought home our 24th state relay championship team last year. They did an outstanding job, they were under some very adverse conditions. They stayed motivated the entire year under some extreme circumstances, as we all know. We're very proud of these young ladies, they started a little getting us ready for this upcoming season. We had three juniors and one sophomore on that group last year, and we were able to get them all back this year also. So we want to congratulate these young ladies for bringing us home that 24th state relay championship. Then we flip-flopped a year later, and we won the 4x400 meter relay, which is the mile relay, where each girl runs 400 meters. On that relay team, we have three of the young ladies who are standing up here, and then our fourth addition is Ms., oops, I'm sorry, we have runner-ups from last year standing up here. But this year, we have two young ladies who were added to the mix, and that's Ms. Destinay Clark and Ms. Abriel Artley. Along with Jacqueline and Ricky, and they represented our 4x400 meter relay team. They were the number seven high school ranked relay team in the United States this indoor season, and they are number 17 with California and a couple of other states they were, but they were number 17 in the outdoor season. They also set a new school record, and that's saying a whole lot because we don't get too excited about things that we kind of accomplished, because we've had been blessed with a lot of good young ladies. But they set themselves apart, and that's why we try to get the girls to think about doing doing something that is very rare, and this group has been able to attain that. They did it as a really good group, very supportive of one another, and we're very proud of them. And last but not least, I'd like to just say quickly, on this traumatic, this great day with Title IX, our former PE head of the department, Ms. Margaret Born from back in the day, did a very good job by selecting our first coach, Ms. Karen Huff. And without Ms. Karen Huff getting us off to that tremendous start, laying the foundation for us, we wouldn't be the program that we are to this day. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Thank you, congratulations. And you didn't take enough credit for yourself. Thank you. Oh my gosh, yes. Congratulations, you get one too.
Big congratulations to our girls' track and field program one more time. And and we have one more recognition that we'd like to make here with the Board approval. Was not on the original agenda, won't take too long, is that okay? Thank you very much. We'd like to recognize the Ray Aiden Friend of Athletics Award winner for this school year. We started this award after the passing of Ray Aiden, who was our equipment manager and did all things for the ETHS Athletic Department after he passed away in 2014. And it's presented annually to the individual that has best served ETHS student athletes, coaches, and the athletic department with loyalty, selflessness, humility, effort, joy, and Wildcat pride in a non-coaching role. And this individual has done it all for us, from building the best athletic facilities in the state of Illinois in some sports, to helping support us try to get more and more opportunities for our freshmen to participate, to restoring a ton of coaching stipends that we lost during a freezing frozen period before we both started. And more importantly, just being up in the crowd, cheering our kids on with a smile on his face, and Wildcat pride in his heart. And our winner for this year is Dr. Eric Witherspoon. You got to go around, you got to go around. Fist bumps. Give that give that man a pin.
Don't forget your pin.
Finally.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
First of all, thank you. Wow. Second of all, to all of you, you have made this meeting, you have made this evening. For all that you've accomplished and for coming this evening with all of your enthusiasm and all of your talent and all of your accomplishments, you make us very, very proud. Thank you for coming tonight, and yes, you're allowed to leave now. Great to see you.
So athletes, coaches, and parents, we're going to do some quick photos in the main lobby, and then we'll have you guys on your way so they can get to their business. And yes, Eric, I thought you were going to say it, but tonight is
It's a great day to be a Wildcat.
Well, that's really nice.
I'm going to do this award, yeah.
Yes, yeah, tall and that stride.
Well, first of all, I see our next two presenters and our last two people left in the audience. But Lonnie and Lauren, I'm sure that you couldn't have picked a better board meeting to attend than all that excitement. I'm going to jump right into the to the next item, because we have received the Association of School Business Officials International Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting. Now, the board is probably going to yawn, because this is the 14th consecutive year that ETHS has won won this recognition. But it's not one of those things that they just print them on paper towel and hand them out. In fact, in the state of Illinois, out of the over 800 school districts, only about 60 have received this award, and ETHS is one of them. So I want to ask Mary Rodino to come up and accept this, because we we have something to present. And Mary, to you, but also to your entire team and to everybody in this district that has to make the finances of this district work, because a lot of people have their hands on that budget that you prepare. And and I just want to say to you, this is a big deal. To be recognized by ASBO International and to get an award for excellence in financial reporting is no small deal. Chief Financial Officer, Mary Rodino, thank you and congratulations.
Okay, well, I don't know where I put my pins, so I'll take another.
You guys are something else.
And if you want me to just jump in next, I mentioned Lonnie, Lonnie Stonich is here. Our amazing and wonderful Fan Programming, that I just, I'm just not sure that there's anything to compare to it anywhere in the country, Lonnie, to be honest. And by the way, and all the publishers and authors know that too. But she's going to be here to report on our Family Action Network Fan, and as always, we're always thrilled to have you come, because we, it reminds us of what you've brought to the quality of life in our community.
Thank you very much. I'm going to see if I can manage. I told Marcus to come sit next to me, but I think he's going to hide from me right now. I'm just going to go like, let's see what happens if I go like that. That's the wrong way. That's the right way. Okay, good. Look at that mastery in just seconds. District 202 Board, thank you so much for inviting me to come for yet another report to you. I will be as brief as I can, we have a little bit of material to cover, and I have to start with a couple thank yous, and I'm very interested about getting, I'm going to do a fist bump because I want a pin. Anyway, let's proceed, so there's the fan logo. All right. Of course, we must start here, of course, which is Dr. Eric Witherspoon, I want to say to you, with a very full fan heart, on behalf of the board, the staff, and the many volunteers, the many people who have attended programs both here and elsewhere, we are so grateful that you had such insight. I was looking at my notes, my first meeting with you on October 21st of 2013, was the first time I met with you side by side, talking to you about how could Evanston Township High School, how could some of those, I believe you said you were, took your pen and you pointed at the fan flyer, you said, how do we get some of these people on the stage here at ETHS? And I just want to say that you have been the most gracious host, the most welcoming, the most, anything that we ever needed, I'm so grateful to you for having helped us launch in Evanston so successfully. You're such an inspirational and inspired leader, and I know that the community is going to miss you. We're grateful that you are going to be sticking around, and I know getting involved in other boards as well and other activities, so I hope to now see you in the auditorium a little bit more often, I hope we don't have too many conflicts with the board meetings. So I look forward to being able to welcome you as a guest. It's been just a true pleasure to work with you, thank you so much for everything. You see a couple, just a handful of the shots of you and your wife, in some instances, at some of the events. So there's many more I could have put up there, but there you are. So thank you so much. I appreciate that. I guess I have to move my own slide. Okay, here we go. And of course, then, is want to also acknowledge, of course, Dr. Marcus Campbell, who is assuming the position, as you all know, of the Superintendency beginning in July 1. He has a special role in Fanland, as you well know, he's been on the board. I also looked at that, Marcus, I met you in August of 2013, just a few months before I met Eric. So it's been, that goes on almost nine months, or nine years, excuse me, that we've known each other. Marcus joined the board, I should call him Dr. Campbell, joined the board probably within, I don't have the exact date, maybe a year and a half, two years after our connection. And to say that he's had such a huge impact on Fan Programming, for those of you who've been around you, no, he's done, that would have taken too many slides, all the times that Marcus has interviewed people for us, has helped, has coordinated, and such an excellent thought partner, and I could not be more joyful that District 202 has appointed him as their next superintendent. So bright days ahead. So thank you so much, Dr. Campbell. Okay, in brief, all right, 2021-22 highlights. Fan, this year, this season, we call it season, it's the academic year, 50 virtual events, ETHS sponsored 33 of them. Since the pandemic started, 107 virtual events since the pandemic started, which is, that doesn't include the after-hours events, which start right at the conclusion of the main event. This year, ETHS received 570 free books from Fan, 300 copies of Andrew Eiden and John Lewis's Run right there in the center, 100 copies of Music is History by Questlove, 50 copies of Unprotected by Billy Porter, 100 copies of The 1619 Project edited by Nicole Hannah-Jones, and 20 copies of I Never Thought of It That Way by Monica Guzman. So we are thrilled to be able to offer these books back to your community, we do those as private book distributions when we are doing a book giveaway for some of these authors. So we're thrilled to see the dissemination through the ETHS community. Okay, just a very few highlights, don't worry, I'm not going through all 50 programs, so a couple, a couple of the quick highlights, Andrew Eiden, as you see there, was Said Jones. Said Jones, what a pairing, what an amazing man. Sarah Stein-Greenberg from Stanford, from their Institute of Design, the D-School, and Liz Gerber, who you probably all know from Northwestern. Deborah Turkheimer and Megan Tuohy, Megan Tuohy, of course, ETHS alum, doing a program about credible, Why We Doubt Accusers and Protect Abusers, and then below that, of course, Questlove with Hanif Abdurraqib. That's Hanif's third appearance with Fan, interviewing Questlove for us. He was, of course, on the ETHS stage, as you probably recall. Dawn Turner and Heidi Stevens, Heidi Stevens, who joined the Fan Board this year as well. Dawn Turner, a beautiful program on her book, Three Girls from Bronzeville, and below that, Billy Porter and Jamal Jordan. What an event, I don't even know what to say about that event. That was something, that was one for the books. It was just, I mean, it was just stunning. Another time, more details another time. And then Carol Anderson coming back for Fan for the second time with then Nicole Hannah-Jones for The 1619 Project, beautiful pairing between the two of them as well. And then Rainsford Stoffer and Luisa Struck, we feature, she is a senior at Nutria High School, and Rainsford Stoffer is in her 20s, and they're looking at how to, Rainsford's book was about how young adults can make it through a world, make it through when a world accepts them to be exceptional all the time. Really great inspirational program as well. On the left, Dan Pink and Adam Grant, two On the left, Dan Pink and Adam Grant, two major names in the universe. That was Dan's second visit, Adam's third visit to Fan on Dan's book, The Power of Regret. And then John List and Stephen Levitt, both from the University of Chicago. Stephen Levitt, of course, from Freakonomics fame. John List, by the way, partner of Dana Suskind, who you probably know from the 30 Million Words Project. So that was a really beautiful program as well about John's book. And then last, Monica Guzman, she's so great, and Eric Liu, both of them from the Seattle area. And Monica's book, I Never Thought of It That Way: How to Have Fearlessly Curious Conversations in Dangerously Divided Times. She was brilliant. It was a great, great program. And really, boy, what a pearl of a program. Thomas Fisher and Natalie Moore, about his book, The Emergency: A Year of Healing and Heartbreak in a Chicago ER. He's an emergency physician at the University of Chicago Medical Center. That, what just beautiful, beautiful, poignant program. Loved every nanosecond. Oh, sorry, I almost was done. No, I really am almost done. And then Luma Mufla and Jose Antonio Vargas. Luma, as you probably know, is the daughter-in-law of David Furtensky. ETHS is David Furtensky. He brought the program to me. Luma's book, Learning America: One Woman's Fight for Educational Justice for Refugee Children. She is, she's, that was a beauty. And Jose, what a spark. And then last, Suzie Wise and Morgan Vienn, Design for Belonging. Suzie, like Sarah Stein-Greenberg earlier, also from the D School at Stanford. Love her whole topic about belonging and how to build inclusion and collaboration. So those are just a couple highlights. Now, coming soon, you probably recognize, you know that room, don't you know that room? And that room was, that was the setup for when Ta-Nehisi Coates was here, his second time for The Water Dancer, interviewed by Hanif Abdurraqib. So that's, and they're all holding up copies of The Water Dancer. That was a great event. Is that true? Yes, is that true? One more time. Is it Kendi? Kendi with you, because of the big flowers? Okay. Well, I remember those flowers. It's kind of enormous floral thing. Okay, I apologize. Sorry, Dr. Campbell. You would remember better than me. I apologize. So Ibram Kendi and your very own Dr. Marcus, actually just empty chairs, but Dr. Marcus Campbell. Okay, so this coming year is Fan's 40th anniversary year. I've mentioned that to the Fan board a couple times, and they kind of just blink and look at me blankly. I suppose, I don't know what that means. We'll pretend it's not happening, I guess. I'll be celebrating in my mind. We are going to be doing forecasting then, in-person and personal, in-person and virtual events, both. We will be live streaming when feasible. Not every auditorium, let's just say, is as truly fabulous as your auditorium, especially with all the recent renovations in there. Not all of our host auditoriums are as equipped to do live streaming, so we'll see what happens. We will be doing a strong focus on Zoom events from Thanksgiving through spring break, kind of saving all that winter wear and tear and blizzards and icy and polar vortices and all the rest, saving that, and literally looking at the Zoom events during then. We have multiple new partners for next year that will meet Public Library, Lake Forest High School, District 115, Barrington High School, District 220, and interestingly, the Santa Clara University School of Law. Whatever. And now, because I know that's what you really want to hear from me, it's nice to look at what already happened, but I know you're curious about what's coming. So some of these things are solid. I don't put dates on any of these right now. Some things were probably about 80% there, some things we just haven't asked in. So don't come find me a year from now. It's like, what happened to so-and-so? They didn't show up. We'll see what happens. All right, we're going to start with Gabor Maté and his book, oh gosh, this guy is so incredible. He's a specialist on addiction, trauma, childhood development, and he looks primarily at the relationship between stress and illness. He has four bestsellers. This is his new book coming out. I'm not going to read all the titles. I assume you can all read for yourself. So I'll skip that part to save time. Javier Zamora, 32-year-old, award-winning Salvadoran poet. This new book is a memoir about his nine-week odyssey solo as a nine-year-old across Guatemala, Mexico, and eventually through the Sonoran Desert, traveled unaccompanied by boat, bus, and foot. After a coyote abandoned his group in Oaxaca, Javier managed to make it to Arizona with the aid of other migrants at age nine. So this book is about his journey. He is brilliant. This is going to be one of the biggest books of the fall. We are thrilled to be hosting him. Stephen Thrasher, Northwestern University professor at Medill, the first journalism professorship in the world created to focus on LGBTQ+ research. He's also a faculty member at Northwestern's Institute for Sexual and Gender Minority Health and Well-being. This is his first book. Very excited to be hosting him. The Return of Temple Grandin. Some of you who have been around for a while know that we last hosted her in 2014. At, we had to move it to Welsh Ryan Arena. It stands as the largest program Fan ever did. 4,000 people showed up at that event, which was completely wackadoodle. Professor of Animal Science at Colorado State University and an outspoken advocate for the autism community. So she is returning with that book. Very interested in this, which is Frank Keel. He's a professor of psychology at Yale. He's also a member of the Cognition Development Lab. He's looking at, you can't quite read that, sub had their childhood, and the lifelong love of science. He's really looking at why is it that kids are so curious and adults are so incurious? What happens to you that you just stop asking why and how? It's going to be fabulous. Here we go. For those of you who know your basketball. Chris Ball, point guard for the Phoenix Suns, NBA Rookie of the Year, All-Star Game MVP, two Olympic gold medals, president of the NBA Players Association from 2013 to 2021. Fun fact, vegan since 2019. The book is about his grandfather, who was mugged and subsequently died of a heart attack from the assault at age 61. This book is about the huge impact that his grandfather had on shaping his life. Could not be more thrilled. And of course, I bet you can guess where we're going to put this program. Get that overflow ready. Mehdi Hassan, this just came through. This is going to be so fab. Mehdi Hassan, many of you know him from MSNBC and his show, Mehdi Hassan Show. He's an award-winning British-American journalist, anchor, and author. You can see the subtitle. This will be great for speech and debate teams. This will be interesting for anybody interested in public speaking. This is not political. I haven't read the book, but it's not being sold as, it's about, he's a debate champ. He does Oxford debates, he does all kinds of things. So it's, I'm hoping, a neutral topic. Neutral-ish, as neutral as it seems can be. Love this program. Perry Zern and Dani Bassett, identical twin scholars. Both, and this book is about curiosity as a practice of connection. They define three kinds of curious people, the busybody, the hunter, and the dancer. They'll explain that later. Perry, who is at the top. Perry is assistant professor of philosophy at American University. Dani, at the bottom, is a professor at the University of Pennsylvania with appointments in the departments of, get ready, bioengineering, electrical and systems engineering, physics, and astronomy, neurology, and psychiatry. And in the year that he won his MacArthur grant, it was the, MacArthur Fellowship was the youngest ever in the history of MacArthur back in 2014. Both are only 42 years old, and this is just going to be a wow program. Fascinated. Love this. This just came in as well. Moya McTeer, she's a science communicator. Her bachelor's in Harvard in astrophysics and folklore mythology. The first Black woman to earn a PhD in astronomy from Columbia University. As she puts it, humanity runs on stories. In my work, I use science to make stories feel rich and stories to make science accessible. So that's what she's going to talk about. ETHS alum, Anna Lemka, correct pronunciation, you tell me, Lemka, Lemki? Not sure, it could go a couple different ways. If it's pronounced in the German way, it'd be Lemka, but I'm not quite sure. ETHS class of 85, I think you guys honored her maybe in 2018 for Alumni Award, maybe, maybe earlier. She's professor, medical director of addiction medicine at Stanford University School of Medicine. This book is about how to moderate compulsive overconsumption in a dopamine overloaded world. Who doesn't need that? This book, this guy. Joseph Earl Thomas, this is, he got his MFA from Notre Dame. He's currently a PhD student at Penn. It's a coming-of-age memoir about the difficulty of growing up in a hazardous home and the glory of finding salvation in geek culture. He's, this book has got the buzz, 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 buzz. It's going to be stunning. Can't wait. Love everything about him. Love this book. Tried to get it when she came out in Hardbound, so we're trying to swing it on the paperback tour. Leana Wen, emergency physician, professor of health policy and management at GW's Milken Institute School of Public Health. She's also at the Brookings Institute. She also writes for the Washington Post, CNN, blah, blah, blah. I shouldn't say that. That's disrespectful. Lots of things she does. She attended college at 13. Her family immigrated from China. They were homeless for quite some time. She went to college at age 13, became a Rhodes Scholar, turned to public health as a way to make a difference. Love this book, this topic. I had hoped to host her last year and was unable, so we're going to get her on the rebound. Young Pueblo Diego, formal name, Diego Perez, Ecuadorian writer and poet. He goes by the pen name, Young Pueblo, which means young people. He is a, they call him the poet meditator. He began meditation practice a number of years ago to heal from drug and alcohol addiction. He's published poems on Instagram since 2013, has almost 2 million followers on Instagram. As he puts it, "I think of myself as an explorer. I'm on this journey just like everyone else. What I hope to create is reflective material that can help people build their own self-awareness." Going to be a great program. So him, the lighter, it's about just coming to terms with who the heck you are. Offloading some of all of that. And then I'll finish with, wait for it. There she is. There is no cover yet for the book, so that is not the book cover, as you can see, cover to be revealed. I don't know what the cover is, but Tiffany Haddish, stand-up comedian, actress, host, and producer. Her breakout film, as many of you know, in 2017 was Girl's Trip. Her first book was a memoir called The Last Black Unicorn. This is a new essay collection. She's also the founder of She Ready Foundation to support foster kids in need. Interesting, as I was putting together all of these bios for this presentation, how many of our authors were homeless for periods of time, living in cars for periods of time, a lot of, a lot of childhood trauma in a lot of the people that we're featuring. So I find that just a point of note. More to come. That's probably, most of that is going to be just for fall. There's going to be other stuff as well. You know, we'll see what happens with in-person programs. We're going to try to get a bunch of them in, or some of them in anyway. Not every author wants to be in person. Some absolutely don't want to be in person, some can't wait. So it'll be a mishmash, mix-match, something, something. Happy to take any questions or comments.
So Lonnie-
Yes, sir.
Is just for fall, an attempt at understatement? You're amazing.
No, I really, those really are, well, there's probably some winter in there, a little bit of winter. I don't even know the spring, I don't have the spring grids yet, so mostly fall and winter.
A little bit that I tried to say in my introduction. What you've done to enhance the quality of life and the intellectual engagement in this entire area is simply unmatched. You're an amazing person.
Well, it's an amazing organization that will live long after I'm gone as well. So I want it to be, I don't, that's not a foreshadowing. I have no plans to step down yet. But, you know, that's my, really, my third third is I need to build the infrastructure of Fan in such a way that when I do step away, it's going to boom. I want some, I want some whippersnapper 30-year-old to come in here, some Booth Kellogg MBA to come in and just blow the whole thing up. That's what I'm waiting for, so. If you know one, let me know.
You're someone else.
Anybody else, anything else?
So I just want to say, once again, Lonnie, sort of echoing what Eric just said, you have really changed this community. And I just am blown away. And you know, when I leave town and go to some of these workshops, so stuff that I do across the country and just kind of give a list of the people I've seen, folks are really amazed. And then the next thing they want to say to me, or they do, is, "Wow, that must have really cost a lot of money. How did you get the tickets?" And I'm like, "Well, it's kind of free."
Kind of free?
Yeah. So it actually doesn't surprise me that, did you say Santa Clara Law School?
School of Law, yeah.
School of Law. It doesn't surprise me that they want to connect with Fan because, you know, there's been a lot of trauma connected to the last couple of years, the pandemic. But one of the things that did happen is we learned how to do all this work virtually.
Absolutely.
And so we're able now to go well beyond our community. So I think it's been pretty powerful for this community and watching it grow beyond the community. But it was still the Chicago metropolitan area. But now we've gone much further.
I mean, even in the Chicago metropolitan area, I mean, we, this year, we welcomed the University of Chicago Lab School Parents Association, join Fan. And, you know, or even just the Chicago schools more generally. I think that there's no way that really, I mean, let's be honest, Lake Forest High School or Barrington High School, it's just too much of a drive for most of their parents to come to in-person programs. We had about 30% of our audience came from outside of Illinois last year and from all, you know, dozens and dozens of countries. So it's robust, and it's just, it's, we'll see what happens. I mean, I love a nice in-person event. Everyone, you all know that about me. But there's been some pretty ineffable joys of virtual programming, I have to say. I don't mind them.
Right, right.
Thank you. I appreciate the support. We appreciate the support of District 202 for Fan programming. Very much appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Other questions, board members?
Just because I don't want us to get too excited about the virtual world. Because what I do love when I've been to our events is how we cultivate a space for our kids. And you will often privilege their, you know, participation and their seating, and it's just so rich. And I think that that can't really happen online. So thank you.
We also look forward to, I can't wait to see about which of our authors can also come during the day maybe and talk to some of the students as we had in the past, and see if we can rub that up a little bit as well. You know, it's just, it's just really a mixed bag. There's just some, sometimes, it's just, it's, I don't need to tell you. It's a changed landscape, and so it's just sometimes authors don't want to leave. Sometimes they're caring for an older parent. Sometimes they have little kids at home, and they're just as happy to stay online. But others are just, they can't wait. They're chomping at the bit. So it's just going to be a little bit all over. But thank you. Appreciate that comment. Good.
Other comments?
Good.
So Lonnie, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thanks for the invitation to come. Thank you.
And come get your pen.
I was joking.
Around the circle.
No, it's okay. Seriously, I want to-
Come on, Lonnie.
No.
You want me to take it to you?
No, that was mostly a joke. Maybe at my retirement, I'll grab a pen. Thank you.
Thank you, Lonnie. You got your pen?
Like, get me into, like, free anymore?
You don't know. You just don't know. All the board meetings. You get a front row seat. All right, our next item on the agenda is a report on the social consciousness programming.
And Lauren Hamilton is getting queued up there, and Dr. Campbell is moving, I think, to the table. But looking forward to this report on our social consciousness programming.
Good evening, board. Lauren Hamilton serves dual roles here at ETHS. She is the equity analyst, and she's also my assistant. And I'd just like to start by saying, first, thank you to Lonnie, because a lot of the programs that Fan does is also part dovetails very nicely with our social consciousness series. And what you'll see tonight is, I'm so proud of this report, as we were putting this together, as Lauren was putting this together. I said, "This is why we're so tired right now at the end of the year, because it is really the signature work of our school." What we're sharing with you tonight is not happening at this scale at any other school in America. And we're happy to be doing it here and looking for more opportunity and ways to grow the work. So I'm going to turn this over to Lauren, and we'll start from there.
Good evening, everyone. It is so nice to be back here again after two years to report on the amount of work and love that has been led by our educators, our community partners, and our student leaders to pull off our first in-person social consciousness series events in the last two years. So we'll get started. I'll cover the summits first, and then Dr. Campbell will talk about some additional adaptive work that's come out of the principal's office. So first, we'll go over and just quickly review what the purpose of the social consciousness series is at District 202 and the framing for this year's work. I'll share some highlights on all of the summits and an additional event that we've added to the programming. I'll cover some of the reflections that the organizers have had and goal-setting that we've done for 2223. Dr. Campbell will review some of the additional adaptive work and partnering that's come out of the office, and then we'll take any additional questions and comments you might have. So the social consciousness series, in short, is work that our entire community is invested in to improve a sense of belonging at ETHS amongst our students who have marginalized identities, specifically students who have racial and ethnic marginalized identities. And so I do wanna say firstly that this work would not exist without the labor of love that our Black and Brown educators have been leading for decades at ETHS, and without the support of our administrators and our board. And so over the last several years, this series has grown to include community events. We've had events for parents, but most importantly, our students are at the center of what we do here. We are about the work of beloved community, building relationships and providing opportunities for students to connect with each other as they explore their identity, build healthy identities, and have conversations about the implications of some of these identities that we hold in these social constructs that we know have very real implications for how we move throughout society. So that's the general purpose of the social consciousness series. I would say some of the most exciting parts of the series for me as an organizer is working with students to pull off our summits. And so this year, Dr. Campbell welcomed us back to the building with a vision of leaning into care, wellness and healing. We know that the pandemic that we're still moving through has had some pretty severe implications in a lot of communities of color predominantly. It's been really difficult on our young people, it's been difficult on our educators, we've been moving through racial reckoning uprisings, and so this year was just about trying to be as authentic as possible and getting back to being human. And he gave an amazing Institute Day address with all the staff back in the auditorium in August, and what he spoke about was rooted in Dr. Nadine Burke Harris's work from The Deepest Well, where she talks about the ways that we can mitigate the neurological implications of major stressors, what she calls toxic stress and trauma, on young people. And so of those six, I wanted to highlight focus on mental health, healthy relationships and mindfulness, which I believe have been at the foundation of the work that ETHS has done since 2020. And as I was updating this slide deck for this evening, I just, I love using this photo, this young man just graduated actually this year. This is where we left off at in 2020. We were able to do our Black Student Summit, and we had our LGBTQ+ Student Summit, and then we went remote, thinking we'd be back here in two weeks, and a year and a half later, we're just getting back. So I took this quote from Patia Braithwaite, who is an author and organizer, and she says here about joy. "Joy isn't a distraction, it's nourishment. It's part of where some of us find the energy to continue thriving." And I feel that that really just spoke to the vision that the organizers and Dr. Campbell really wanted us to run with. Keep it simple, but keep it profound. Let's bring folks together, let's give our students space to connect with each other and just simply experience joy. So that's where we went. All right, I'm gonna try to keep it as short and sweet as possible, it's difficult, so we can get to the wonderful highlight video that William Jenkins put together for us. So for Black Summit this year, Black Joy was the theme. We had some really popular t-shirts that were designed. Someone said it looks like Black Good Morning America, I think that might've been you. So one of our newer staff members, the district, Taren Stevenson, he's an artist, a musician, he has his own consultant group. He does a lot in addition to serving as our specialist in the Student Success Center or the hub. And so we tapped him to keynote the event this year, and he had a wonderful message about what it means to cultivate joy even though happiness can come and go. We had a wild water main issue on February 9th, so usually this is a two-day event. The Watermaid Break had us cancel February 9th, so all of the organizers and myself, we had all the students attend on February 10th, stayed up planning to make it happen. And so I just wanna express so much gratitude for the team of folks who were up until 10:00 PM trying to make this happen for the students the next day. With our workshops, we had, I was counting, over 15 workshops because we had so many students, we wanted to make sure that they had a lot to choose from. But all of those workshops centered creativity, wellness and community. So some of the highlights, we had a waistband making workshop where students were with one of our coaches who is skilled in the art of waistband making and understands what it means to create that. We had one of our community partners from Chop Chop Mobile Salon come and do a natural haircare workshop, which has been something that the students have been wanting for years that we were able to pull off this year. Dr. Keith Robinson and some of our other educators who are in Greek fraternities and sororities, some of our historically Black ones came through, and they represented as many of the Divine Nine that we could get in the door. They also talked about HBCUs. And then in addition to our workshops, we offer affinity groups, which are just additional spaces for students to gather around other identities that they hold in addition to their Black identity. So we had an LGBTQ+ student workshop, we have a workshop for young women, we have a workshop for the boys, we got athletes together this year, we had a workshop for immigrant and first-generation Black students, and then one more for biracial students as well. And those are always spaces that the young people look forward to. And then I also wanted to just highlight some of the partnerships we were able to bring together this year. So we had Sex Ed Chicago come in and do an inclusive sex ed program. Again, Chop Chop Mobile Salon, who were exploring pulling off a monthly program throughout the school year. The Illinois Student Assistance Commission, or ISAC, came through to do a post-secondary planning. Our Black Student Union, that's been gotten off the ground again after some years, led a workshop. Northwestern University, of course, and then HBCUs and our fraternities and sororities. All right. These are some photos I grabbed. So a component of the planning, which is really wonderful, so over 25 student planners this year, is because the summit takes place in February, they're able to collaborate with our Black History Month committee. So this is a poster from the Spirit Week that they planned, and they were very thoughtful about what summit days were gonna be, what theme. In the middle here, we have photo represented by the folks who came through for the Divine Nine program. It's a little grainy, but I could not put it on here. We even have some alum who came back to support students, talk about their experience on college campuses and what it meant to be part of these organizations, and then some folks down, from down the street at Northwestern also. And then because this year, we had a half-day event, and we wanted to kind of be conscious of how many students we were gathering at once in February, we waited until it got nicer to have a throwback end-of-the-year bash just out on the tennis courts. We invited DJ Cash Era, her name is Kasara Heining, who in 2021 was voted as Chicago's best hip-hop DJ. So she came, we brought some food out and just gave the students the chance to kick it and enjoy each other before they left for the summer. All right. So our LGBTQ+ Student Summit was in early March with a theme of Take Pride, Take Joy, Take Action. They were, this event was planned in partnership with our GSA, our Gender Sexuality Alliance, that has a very robust student leadership team. And some highlights from the event, our keynote was Precious Brady Davis, who is a Black trans woman, she is an author, a speaker. And after she spoke, one of our seniors who just graduated, Mordecai Evans, and one of our newer staff members, also from the hub, had the chance to sit down and interview Precious, and students were able to submit questions. And Precious took the time to answer those questions onstage at that moment, and then also led a workshop with students thereafter. We also had an alum come back, Jay Rice. I wasn't sure when Jay graduated, do you know?
2010.
2010. So Jay Rice, actually, I've met out in the community. Jay is a curator of events in space for Black and Brown queer folks, specifically Black and Brown trans folks in the community. Jay is a DJ, and he also works for Brave Space Alliance, which is a very influential and important organization based out of Chicago that is run and supports Black trans folks. So Jay came back, hosted a workshop called Black Loud and Queer about what it means to live the intersections of queerness and Blackness. And then a good friend of mine as well, who also went to Northwestern, Javi Ayah, who now produces a performance art and drag show, did the performance at the end of the event. I put some of the workshops there for you to check out. Some of the wonderful things that came out of this event, aside from the drag show and Jay coming back and having Precious Brady Davis, is the emphasis on what it means to be queer and also a person of color. And that's something that the organizers for LGBTQ Summit have been doing a lot of work around, is making sure that we're centering multiple perspectives and talking about the intersections of race and queerness. These are some snapshots. So we have Precious and her book, I Have Always Been Me, a photo of Jay, and then Javi Ayah at a event they were hosting. Great. Mina, Middle Eastern, North African and Asian Student Summit, Mina Joy. So this year, Mina was organized by two student groups. So we had the Asian Heritage Alliance, or AHHA, and then the South Asian Middle Eastern Student Group, or SAME Club. And Dr. Raul Sharma keynoted, he is a friend of the summit, he's part of the Evanston community, he's a psychologist and also founder of Funkadessi, which is a music group that brings, brings together a diverse range of music, funk, reggae, different Indian forms of music that have cultural significance, and it's a massive band. They've been to Mina's summit before, and this year, he took it a step further for us. He spoke to his work around inclusive joy and what that looks like as our keynote. Funkadessi again performed, and then even did a workshop with the students this year. All right. These are some photos. So we have students who are adorning themselves with Hannah during a workshop. In the middle, we have a photo of the organizers, led by Diana Bali-Tan in community service. And then on the right here, we have students who were personalizing tote bags, led by one of our new educators. And lastly, we have the Latinx Student Summit, which ended the summit series on April 27th. And their theme was Animo, Amor, Alegría, Ponte Las Pilas. Kat Lazo, who is a producer, a host, and the host of a podcast called The Cat Call, came and keynoted. She spoke to what it means for her to be a Latina, and also she talked about anti-Blackness within the Latinx community and what they need to do to build solidarity in our community. And so over 30 panelists and presenters came to ETHS that day to pull off six workshops for our students. A lot of those workshops were hands-on, which is something that the students have expressed that they've wanted. So there was one on cuisine, there was a dance workshop as well. And then at the end of the day, there was a dance that was just so beautiful to see. It took place in Beardsley Gym. We had ice cream vendors, all these snacks, and a DJ, and it was wonderful because Latinx Summit has not happened since 2019. They didn't get to have the event along with Mina Summit, and so it had been a long time since they've been able to be in community together for this day. I was also looking at some of the registration information, and over 17 countries were represented in the backgrounds of the students who attended, including Puerto Rico, and 15 student organizers were involved in the organizing for that day. Some photos. So we have all the staff who were living their best lives at that dance, Kat Lazo, and then a really amazing presentation, that's the word I'm looking for, by some of our senior girls, who were talking about the tradition of having a quinceañera, and what that meant for them as they emerged into young womanhood. All right. This year, we added a new event to the social consciousness series, Abilities Awareness Week. So one of the things that we did as an office this year was to establish two new affinity groups for staff. So we established our LGBTQ affinity group and an abilities affinity group. And so staff, students from our day school, as well as some of the resident artists who are represented at Over the Rainbow in Evanston, came together to plan the very first Ability, Abilities Awareness Week in March. And one of the things that they did was they put a pop-up in one of our multipurpose rooms and exhibit. The students from day school and other programs that ETHS put together a number of really amazing displays that focused on those three topics, so disability history, role models in the abilities community, and race and ability. Since this was the first year, the staff members who were supporting this programming and taking the lead really did the due diligence of making sure they were talking to students, surveying, and really thinking about what it means to do this work and do it with student voice at the center. Something else that our organizers did to go the extra mile was to develop a Google site of resources for teachers to be able to use, just to kind of raise the awareness of what it means to have students with different abilities in class. We established the partnership with Over the Rainbow in Evanston. And in the future, the students are hoping to have a day-long event that focuses on other hidden disabilities such as ADHD, autism, and some of the learning disabilities in our community. Some photos, so some teen students performed. I believe this was in the morning in the main lobby on the last day of Abilities Awareness Week. In the middle is work from the residents at Over the Rainbow, there was a gallery that they provided artwork for. And then one of the exhibits, the boards from the exhibit in our multipurpose room, that classrooms were able to tour, and then it was just open for anybody to drop by. And I could not, not mention, because I just thought it was really profound, the, how far our educators went to make sure that the community was supported and had the ability to do a lot of learning that week and always, and so this is just a snapshot of the website that they put together. All right. Yes, we've arrived. So as Dr. Campbell gets to the video, some of the things we're reflecting on for next year is increasing student attendance for all of the events. It's been a really rough couple of years, and so some of the numbers were a little lower than we've seen in the past, but we're going to use our resources, use the technology at our disposal, and do some classroom and club and activity push-ins to really make sure students know what the series is about. We're going to develop some opportunities for cross-cultural and intercommunal relationship building. A number of students came to me and some other staff organizers this year, wanting to have like, a culture night or a fair, so we're gonna think about doing that for next year. Having more targeted outreach to support student engagement, especially some of our students who are disengaged in school right now and who have had a really hard time, and then just leaning into creating more spaces for staff joy and relationship building.
Yes, I am your principal, Dr. Marcus Campbell, and it is such a pleasure to finally be able to have an in-person Black Student Summit after two whole years. It's been two years.
The reality is, happiness is based on happenings. And if my happenings don't happen the way that I hope that they happen, then I don't have any happiness. then I don't have any happiness. But joy is different than happiness. Joy isn't based on what I see. Joy is not based on what's happening around me. If I've got joy on the inside, it doesn't matter what's happening on the outside.
And every day, I recognize that we must be strong. We must be allies. And we must work together every day to empower you for who you are.
You know, I think it's really important for public schools to gather community, whether that's based on sexuality, race, ethnicity, because you need spaces to actually create a safer community outside of, you know, larger society.
And I wish that I had events like this because representation matters. Just for queer folks and queer folks of color to be able to see other queer and trans individuals thriving in an intentional way gives them a different type of hope for the future.
The LGBTQ community is another kind of diversity. You know, when it comes to diversity, we should be talking about ability, faith, gender, sexual orientation. Those communities are communities that you will interact with for a lifetime, and they only enrich us.
If we know that there's xenophobia, racism, sexism, heterosexism, and all of these systems of, you know, imbalance in power, it's important for us to insist by disrupting, by speaking to, by, again, claiming space, affirming space. So to me, that's the insistence. And if you do it with a counterbalance of compassion, humility, and accountability, for me, it's an unstoppable package.
I think it's important to get together as a community because we're underrepresented everywhere else. And we should take opportunities where we can meet each other, see each people who are like us and in our community.
If it wasn't for this, we'd all kind of be like cooped up in a box. We wouldn't really know that there's other people that really share similar experiences, you know, even though we're like not from the same culture.
That this is happening during a school day. You know, most students, this happens after school, right? Or on a Saturday, right? Or like during the summer, as like a summer program. So I think that your high school is actually leading the way for other schools to follow.
I hope that you find the beauty in your culture, in your background, in your upbringing. And please remember that there is power in numbers. Don't go through life by yourself. Build community.
Thank you. All right. I'm gonna turn it. Okay. All right. So now we are going to transition to talking about. Can you go to the next slide for me? I'm nervous. Thank you. Okay. All right. So in addition to the whole social consciousness series, there was also a lot of other work that we were supporting as an office. And I'm gonna turn it over.
Sure. You're doing such a great job, Lauren.
Thank you.
So we have also been working with our staff, leadership team on various aspects of how the work really shows up in our day-to-day operations. For example, last year this time, we had one of our history teachers, Janaye McAlpin, who talked about the role and presence of whiteness in leadership culture here at ETHS, and how do we de-center whiteness in our operational culture as leaders. Cory Wallace, someone else who we have been partnering with, with our building leaders, teachers, and staff, had led monthly meetings with regard to race and other intersecting identities with our leadership team, as well as reflecting on our leadership culture. Christine Saxman worked with our district anti-racist working group, along with Cory. Cory did both of those groups. And who's that? That's Devon. I don't have my glasses on. That's Devon Alexander, who worked directly with our Delt, our district equity leadership team. And these are other professional development opportunities that are available for all staff to engage in more deeper personal work that's, you know, supported by the summits and everything else. So these are just a few more items that we engaged in as a school all year to really process our identities, process the world, process the pandemic, process the racial reckoning happening in the country. And Ilet Talk Backs. We did work on Institute Day. It was a new year to establish a district anti-racist working group. We call it the DawG, D-A-W-G. And that work will continue. And we'll continue to engage and expand the work moving forward. Programs and partnerships. We've partnered with a group with Black Brown and Breathing. Is that on here? Black Brown and Breathing. Because what we wanted to model for our students of color is that, you know, mindfulness is something that students of color and staff of color can also engage in. We partnered with Rebel Human, with Jenny Arrington and Rebel Human. And these were teachings of mindfulness that staff and students had the ability to access through PE, through after-school activities. We offered these programs for our racial affinities parent caucuses. And so we tried to, as much as possible, give our students and staff and our parents access to some of the mindfulness work that we were doing as a school. And, yeah, the council. So a few, maybe a year ago, I talked to the board about making sure that any student of color, Black or Black boys or boys of color who wanted a mentor and opportunity to have a mentor. Well, the pandemic slowed us down, but we still have that infrastructure built to where we are going to be able to partner with 10-plus organizations to get any student, particularly boys of color mentors. So we had to take a little bit of a step back this school year as we built that infrastructure. But we are well-positioned for the next school year to begin to build the kind of partnerships, both locally and in the Chicagoland area, for mentoring for some of our students. And the other organizations up there I've mentioned on the previous slide. So that's a lot of work that Lauren and I have been doing all year long. As you know, that our summit work and some of the work that we have engaged students in with regard to the summits and other identities, started with our Black Male Summit. And this has just proliferated and expanded. We are creating community, creating opportunity. And when Lauren says educators, what she means is this is not just teachers. This is support staff. This is safety. This is everybody, anyone in our school or in our district that holds an identity that they like to share and that they like to cultivate and build relationships with students, they are able to do so. And it is a part of our healing as we move forward through some difficult times. And that's our presentation. And we're happy to take any questions. And we spent a lot of time here because, as I said, it's hard to condense it. But it is our signature work. It really is.
I agree. It is our signature work. And I really enjoyed every minute of it. So thank you. And thank you for that video. And it's also exciting to see the professional development, what you're doing with the staff, how you're keeping folks fresh and engaged in this work, which is sometimes challenging in a place like ETHS because this has been going on. And, you know, some people just assume that it's good. It's done. And so we don't have to keep working at it. But we absolutely do have to keep working at it. And, you know, we sometimes get reminders of the work that we've done or neglected or what we've missed. And so there's still, yeah, work ahead. So that's good. So I'll first turn it over to the boards. If anyone has any questions or something you'd like to say or elaborate on.
I'll quickly just add, you know, when I started serving on this board seven years ago, it's been a long time. The presentation was about the Black Male Summit, right? And so to sit here and to see how inclusive it has become to make sure that all our students feel a sense of belonging, it's amazing, you know, the growth that we experienced here and the intentionality. You said before us, I think I was here during the second year, but you said this will be inclusive of all our students. And this is where we start, you know? And so it has definitely become that. So I thank you for that. And the opportunity for other students to cross over and engage, which I've seen happen as well, you know, to be allies and to come and to participate and to learn. So I'm just proud to see how we keep growing.
Other comments?
Just quickly, I just, it's awesome. And you took just the right amount of time, but we could have done more because it was really awesome. And a couple of things. First, just great work and echoing everything Monique said. But I do want to give a shout out to you, Lauren, because you've done these presentations. And I think there's an understatement of what is behind the scenes to get all this to happen. And I know that you're doing a lot of this work as much as Dr. Campbell's wonderful. He's got 10,000 other things he's doing. Probably so do you. But you're doing this, and you've done a really great job. And in previous times, I've really appreciated how you've cultivated, I've heard you and seen you with students here cultivating them to be leaders and to sort of be in the front. So I just want to give you a big shout out because this doesn't happen just at the snap of a finger. This is a lot of work. And working with young people who, you know, are sometimes in all different places and, you know, have lots of great ideas that can't be realized in a half-day thing. So you really have to help them to get what they need but yet, you know, and get it done. So I just wanted to say thank you to all of the work behind it, but especially to you.
Thank you for saying that because it is absolute. There would be no scale of what we're doing if it weren't for Lauren and her commitment to Student Voice and the planning and the organizing. So yes. And she attends all of the DawG meetings, all of the Delt meetings. I don't go to those. All of that, all of the BLT meetings, all of the planning meetings that I can't attend. She does it all. And so we're very fortunate. Yes.
Thank you.
Amazing.
I'm just gonna say two things. And one, well, three. One, I'm jealous. I think the work you just shared was amazing. And I just love that my kids get to benefit from it. And then, you know, I was just like, should I call? And then, so here's just two ideas, two things to think about. One is, I don't know what platform you're using for or the kids are using for the, you mentioned an abilities website or that kind of thing. And if it's a Google site, which are one of the easiest ones to make, they're not ADA compliant, maybe it's something else. But just to keep that in mind. So, and I've run into that a lot because it's so easy to do, but then it's not accessible. And then the other thing I was just, I've been thinking a lot about is the difference between allyship and being a co-conspirator. And just really thinking about how we can bring that into the space as we design and think about, you know, next year even, and how to help kids understand those differences. But thank you so much.
Thank you for that. I wrote the note down about the Google site and accessibility there. So in 2020, when we went remote, less than a week later, we were gonna have our first Deconstructing Whiteness workshop. It was all planned. A group of five to six educators who have been really present in the work of understanding whiteness and how it functions in a white supremacy culture. We're ready to make this go with sore students as well. And then we went home. So I'm going to revisit that and see if that's something that we can put back on the table for '22, '23. But that's definitely a space where we want to invest in for the series. Thank you.
Actually, I love that because I often think about the students who are not in the auditorium and the impact of seeing their classmates or not seeing their classmates for a day. That's powerful for all students. So I feel like the work that you're doing is really important for the group that you are discussing for the day you're focusing on. But it's also just as important for those other students. And so, yes, the deconstructing whiteness is really exciting to do. But I mean, really thinking about, like, every time there's a session, every time there's a session. I don't know what, of course, I don't, of course, I shouldn't. But I don't know what other adults are saying to the other kids. You know, why or where are the kids today? And what are they doing? And notice who's missing or, you know, just kind of make sure that that's highlighted, make sure that that's lifted up because that's really important.
Yeah. That's definitely something that we talked about as organizers. A staff organizing group this year was making sure that our teachers and our staff know what the series is outside of just like naming that it's happening, naming why it's important. Because some of those conversations can be difficult to have with students. And so we want to make sure they're supported. So I'm hoping this year, we can build that into a little bit of PD using our Tuesday tidbits and our videos that we have, building out some more FAQs, and just making sure the adults are equipped to have these conversations about the importance of the series for the community.
And I would add that the deconstructing whiteness is the heaviest lift.
Yes.
For lots of reasons. And so, but we're ready for it. And we are committed to it because you're right. That is, that work is just as important as the other work that we're doing as well.
Thank you for adding that, Dr. Campbell. It is the heaviest lift. Yes. Thank you. But that's kind of what we do around here, right? We find the heaviest, hardest, the most challenging, and then we go for it.
All right. Well, it's been a pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Make sure you come around the horseshoe.
We were here for a tornado.
We literally.
We should all get.
Yeah, there you go.
Hey.
People texting and calling. Are you okay? We're in great work. I like people in basements.
We are. Okay, let's go.
Yes, I do. Yes. All right. Well, thank you. So we're back on our agenda. So the next item on the agenda is very important. It is the last, this is the last meeting that Dr. Witherspoon will be serving as our superintendent. So I can't believe we're here, but we are. So board members have all prepared just a little something, maybe, to say. I feel like I've had my opportunity to speak to you. So I'm gonna allow my colleagues to talk. And we'll start with Monique, and then we'll just go around.
Thank you. So I act selfishly if I could start because I really wanted to be here tonight. And, you know, I don't know what I was thinking seven years ago of running for school board and serving as CEO for Magal YMC because they're both major deals. because they're both major deals. But this is the first time I've had a conflict, the first time. And, and I wanted to be here for this, right? I did not want you to leave without hearing my words. So I don't know if you know that when Emmanuel, my son, decided to come to E T H S, this was not our first choice. And he had many options to go other places. And he experienced them and they threw everything at him, right? And he went to one school in particular. And he left that school. He came home and he said, ah, mom, you know, the program is good, but there's not a community. Everyone leaves the building and they go to Chicago or they go to different places, but there's no community. He said, I'm not sure. I love the coach, but I'm not sure. And then one of his best friends was tragically killed in our community. And he was devastated. He hasn't, had never experienced a situation like that, Day J Coleman. He, we attended the funeral for Day J. And you stood up to speak. I did not know you. You stood up to speak at the funeral. And I tease you all the time because I said you sounded like, like a Baptist preacher. And I looked up, I really was not paying you any mind because, you know, because our kids were devastated. Our community was devastated. And you got up and you spoke. And you spoke with such intentionality and heart. You didn't know, I mean, you barely knew these kids. They were freshmen coming in. And you knew how this affected our entire community and the students. And from that moment, he told me, he says, see, this is why I chose to come to E T H S. And I got chills. I mean, I, my son had never experienced anything like that. And I couldn't console him. And it was the coaches, it was your words that made him feel a part of this community. And so when I ran, I said publicly that I wanted every child in this community to have an experience like my son. Where he was known, where he was on the radar, where people expected great things from him and told me when it didn't happen, right? I wanted that for every student and I was committed to running because of that. Because I am not a public person. I don't like, you know, my business. I don't like being out front. I like being in the backseat. But when that happened, I had no choice. And you made that work for my son. You made it work for me. And you made it work for so many other black boys that look like him. Yes, we have so much work to do, but my goodness, where we've come from is far worse than, than where we are. I can't even begin to tell you the horrific stories I heard prior to you being here about how our students were treated and dismissed. And so if it were not for him, I would not be here. And if it were not for you, he would not feel like this is his school. So I thank you because of that. And, and I know he's just one story, but he's mine to share. And you made that possible.
We can stop there.
I know. So if I, if I, I know, right? Golly. So my colleagues, I, I am going to have to leave. I feel so bad for not, because this is so important, you know, what I have to do. But I, I wanted to say that because tonight is so, is for 170 men that I take care of and I have to go and represent them too. But I'm going to miss you and I love you dearly.
It is amazing that, that you have not had a conflict like this in all these years.
Never. I was like, are you all kidding me? There's no way I'm going to this Eric's last meeting. And so the tornado. Worked it out. Right? Worked it out because they're still talking. So can I?
Yes.
Can I? Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Monique. Thank you.
I'm shaking, Eric.
Yes. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Be safe.
Mine's not as good, so don't worry. Plus I'm reading on the phone and hopefully my battery won't die. So I can't claim credit for hiring you because I joined the board two years after you got here. But we've served together for a long time. The longest of anybody here, other than some administrators. So I had plenty of experiences to reflect back on as I considered what to say this evening. But I will not be reviewing the entire chronology because you know I love a short meeting. I'm not sure Eric would want me to lead with this, but some of you, well, actually, I think most of you realize this, that Eric was not the unanimous choice of the board hiring him when he came in on a vote of four to three. But those who voted no on Eric later became some of Eric's biggest supporters, which I know because I served with him. It's a notable achievement to arrive that way, persist through multiple contract renewals, and depart 16 years later as the beloved Wildkid superfan we know you to be. The most notable achievement of your time at E T H S is also the one most often remarked upon, not just by those in our community, but also by educators around the country. It bears repeating because it was a big deal at the time, even though today it seems like everyone is doing it. Recognizing the racial inequities baked into the track system of classes at E T H S, you and others saw an opportunity. Changes to the freshman year allowing all our incoming freshmen reading at grade level to enjoy the same chance to earn honors credit in their humanities classes. This change helped expand access to AP courses, changes to biology and other courses followed. But in no case did the changes provoke the intense feelings that came with the first steps. The path to this change was rocky. I remember it well. With missteps along the way and we've not realized all the results we want. But the vision has always been clear from the beginning and you've led the way, even as some of the people involved have changed from board members to administrators. Racial equity work has been central to your tenure at E T H S, but equity for everyone in our E T H S community is still a work in progress, as we know. I will leave it to Eric and others to enumerate all of your various other achievements, but I do want to remark on some more intangible qualities. As Eric has reminded us at various points over the years, he began as an English teacher. So he's always brought the sensibility of a teacher to his work. He puts students first, but teachers are a close second. He became one of E T H S's most visible superintendents, both in the community and in the school building, in the theater and on its athletic fields. Or at least on the sidelines of the athletic fields, not actually on them. He appreciated the importance of the school in the wider context of the community and even the world and how we must all work towards the same ends on behalf of our students. Not all superintendents do this. And your visible president, presence helped pave the way for an improved culture of belonging and community. From the beginning, you faced tough challenges and difficult questions from the board, many of which I'm sure annoyed you, but all of which made you a better superintendent and the school a better place. I have always appreciated your ready smile and your evangelical enthusiasm. I am glad we still have you in our community to contribute in other ways and I hope you find time for relaxation. Thanks for your service, Eric. Best wishes.
You and I have been in a long time together. And you were there for that first boat when we detract.
I definitely was.
Eric, I'm going to speak personally because I want to talk about recognition and resonance and what I've learned from you. So I want to say just a few words about what it has meant to me to work alongside you and within your orbit over these past three years as a member of the 202 Board. The first time I became aware of you as a role model and an ally for racial justice in our community was in about 2009 or 2010. It was the beginning of my own personal racial identity journey when I was just learning in the words of Robin DiAngelo what it means to be white. And when I say just learning, I mean barely a clue. In retrospect, I think this time marked the beginning of a racial identity journey for a lot of white folks in Evanston. Because you, dear superintendent, had already started making an impact through the changes you were implementing to the curriculum here at E T H S. It was an impact that one didn't have to be directly involved with at the high school to feel. We felt the reverberations of what you were doing here across town, in our neighborhoods, schools and faith communities. Even at Northwestern, where I work, we talked around the water cooler because back then at Northwestern wasn't really discussed much elsewhere. Hey, did you hear what they're doing at the high school? They're detracking the curriculum. They're talking about structural racism and white privilege. The faculty and staff over there are doing workshops and trainings. The students are leading the way. The superintendent is making racial equity a priority. Making racial equity a priority, now that was something. That was making waves. And I realized in all my 40 years to that point, I had very little understanding of what that phrase really meant about race or racial equity or why this work was generating such an impact. And perhaps most of all, why people in Evanston were feeling all kinds of ways about it. As I said, as a white woman myself, I was pretty clueless. Not resistant necessarily, just clueless. But I also had a daughter in third grade in District 65 and I could see how race was showing up in her daily life. And I could see how in actuality, race had shown up in my experiences too, all my life, in ways that I never acknowledged or understood. I realized I better start educating myself. So that's when my journey began. That's when I started reading books and sharing articles and participating in the community conversations at the Y W and Beyond Diversity Trainings at the City of Evanston in District 65. And I remember how in one of those early trainings, our own board president, Ms. Savage Williams, described you as an example of a white man in a position of power, using your privilege to advance the work of racial equity in District 202 and really putting yourself on the line for that. Over the past 16 years, you've been an advocate for disrupting the status quo and our number one ally in ensuring that change continues. Because as we all know, it's a process and a constant struggle, but we keep working and we stay focused. As Peter Senge writes in the Fifth Discipline, "The core leadership strategy is simple: be a model." I remember all those years ago when I was just starting my journey, I looked around our community for guidance and examples of what racial equity work looks like in practice, especially among white people. I could see it popping up in places here and there, but at E T H S, it was really taking hold, led by a white man who spoke from his heart with genuine care and love for all of our students, every single one. And I realized I could see myself in you. Not you specifically. I mean, you're a guy and you're probably a bit older than me judging by your hair. We really don't look that, we really don't look that much alike. But I did recognize you in the example for how a white person could and should lead on issues of racial justice. The way you embraced the diversity of our community and used your position of privilege and leadership to create a culture of belonging and safety for all. I recognized you, in you, a model for what I could do as a white person with privilege in our community. And your example has inspired and motivated me ever since. As the saying goes, be the change you want to see in the world. You can't force commitment. But what you can do, you nudge a little here, you inspire a little there, and you provide a role model. Your primary influence is the environment you create. So Eric, thank you for everything you've done for our Wildkid community, for the city of Evanston and for me personally. Thank you for your wisdom and your inspiration and your courage over these past 16 years. Takes a lot of courage to do what you did. Thank you for being an ally and a role model and a leader in the best sense of the word. And all the very best to you in your retirement.
Thank you, Stephanie. Thank you very much.
Hello. I know, it's kind of like, I should roast you just to bring our little levity, right? I won't though. I feel cheated because as much as I love, you know, the chance and really knew that this was going to happen in some way sooner than later, it feels too soon. And I feel like I've tried to take in kind of, you have this way about you. I think that some of it has to do with your height and you've got this classy kind of, you know, vibe. But there's something really powerful also, even more so about the way that you are able to speak to a group of kids and really see them. And, and it feels so beautiful when you just laugh with them and you love them and they feel it. And so I've really been thinking about that a lot. And I admire it. But I'm also really, my kids benefit from that and they feel so proud to be here. And they somehow, in such a huge school, feel that sense of community that Monique spoke of that I really believe is part of your personality, the way that you bring the school together. And so I, I watch and I kind of, I'm in awe of that. And if I were to be a school leader in that way, in that title, that official title, I would think about the ways in which you exist in this space and that you're in the hallways and they all know who you are. Not every superintendent, regardless of if they're in a building or not, get that same recognition. And so I want to thank you for that. It's really quite remarkable. And the other thing that I keep thinking about is that, as I mentioned just a moment ago, your, I think, mode of operation is very much as a co-conspirator. I believe the ways in which you have brought equity and, and real, you know, not just removing of barriers, but how do we then create a more just school system has shown that kind of proximity that you believe that, you know, I keep thinking about and all the names, I was going to look up my notes, but that idea of, do you put yourself in the, kind of in the line of fire? Are, you know, how do you essentially touch the pole? You know, I'm thinking about the woman who climbed the flagpole in South Carolina and took down the Confederate flag. You're, you're there on the inside. Or, you know, I'm thinking about Rosa Parks and the Clifford Durs, you know, and just how, that is so important and critical. And so I really want to thank you for that as well. There is no backseat in what you're doing. So those are just a few things. And most of all, as you, I think the retirement's going to go like this. I'm sure you're going to, you know, do other things. I guess you're going to work for Fan and, you know. But I just want you to know that there's so much for us to continue learning from you and with you. And so just, just know that, you know, many of us are here to continue that. And so in any way possible, you know, I will welcome your retirement, but also fight it a little bit and hopefully get more of that. So thank you.
That's really nice. Thank you.
Eric, we're here tonight to honor your 16-year tenure as superintendent of Evanston Township High School. During your time here, you have earned respect and love from the community, your staff and your students. You took the time to really see and know your students, spending time in the hallways greeting them and in the lunchrooms. Eric, you laid the groundwork for providing opportunities to all students and your work will affect generations. E T H S is a completely different school today than it was 16 years ago and all for the better. You should be very proud of what you have accomplished in your career. I'm not exactly sure what led you to doing equity work in schools, but I am so glad that you brought your big eye. but I am so glad that you brought your big ideas to ETHS. We are so lucky that you chose us. Back in 2018, when I was a community member with an interest in serving on the ETHS Board, you took the time and you sat down with me, a stranger, to answer all of my questions about the equity work that has been done and continues to be done at ETHS. I was in awe of how much progress had been made in racial equity work at ETHS. And I felt deeply that I wanted to help ensure that the work was sustainable and would continue forward. So it was you and your work that brought me to ETHS, despite the fact that my kids were still very young and we weren't here yet. Some people may not be aware, but the equity work did not come easily and especially the detracking of freshman year and had to be fought for every step of the way. You stuck your neck out and you risked the backlash because you knew that this is what your students deserved and that this important work had to be done in the ETHS community. You used your white privilege to advocate for and implement new educational opportunities for our students of color and for that I am grateful. The results of your work are clear. And if you don't believe me, just look at the data. It shows huge positive outcomes for our students of color under your tenure. I see you as a mentor and a role model and I appreciate being able to partake in your insights and wisdom for all of these years. I admire your candid and vulnerable way of speaking on important topics and your devotion to this school shines through every word. I've enjoyed working with you since 2019 and you will be so missed from ETHS, but your impact will be felt for years to come. Thank you for making each day a great day to be WildKit and enjoy your well-deserved retirement.
Thank you, Liz. That was very nice.
So I get to go last. You know, as educators, it's often the case that you don't get to see the impact. Once in a while, a student will come back and say, oh, you know, you meant so much to me, you really helped me. But that doesn't always happen. And yet we know that there is an impact. And in your case, that impact is so enormous, you've touched the lives of thousands of young people. And that's just here, not to mention the 25 years before you came here and worked with all those other students. So you have made a tremendous personal impact. But because you sought the change, the significant change in advancing equity here from a pretty early part of your time at ETHS, and then you stayed for 16 years, hint, Marcus, 16 years. Let's not forget that. You were able to not only see those initial efforts grow and deepen, but you got to see some of the things that came beyond what you started with and to lead that. And that is a huge, a huge part of your legacy, really. It's really, I'm glad that you were able to see the fruits of your labor in somewhat real time over the course of 16 years. But what you really did and what I'm really happiest about is you created a foundation that really established the advancement of equity, not just in the time you're here, but forevermore. And I'm a very pessimistic and optimistic person at the same time, but I actually do believe, as hard as this work is and how slow it is and how much that drives us all insane, that the work that we are doing here, that you started, the leadership that you put in place and the foundation that you started is really the work that will get us to the no predictability of achievement by race and to closing gaps. And really being a place where it's just students who know they belong, who know they have agency and a voice and they know how to use it and they get a great education that they take with them. And so I really feel like your legacy has multiple... This foundation, this legacy really has a lot in it that going forward. I mean, first, you have this amazing team of administrators, some of them here, and teachers and staff who are really ready to hit the ground running to move ETHS forward because they're already running on the track that you helped build. They, there's just an amazing amount of courage that went into the development of programs and changes of policies that really went up against hundreds of years of systemic racism and the age-old belief in education, well, we've always done it this way. And you really said, no, we're not going to do that. And perhaps the biggest and farthest-reaching part of the foundation that you've established here is our students. ETHS students take with them such a deeper understanding, I think, of themselves and the world and how to make it better. They take that into their jobs and to college and their families and their communities. And their voices, their knowledge, and their experiences, all gained here, really help them to call out inequity and move for change at every level. And on a personal note, I've seen that with my own children, but I've also seen that with other children. In 2020, you know, a group of mostly young women who had just graduated, were about 19-years-old, started Evanston Fight for Black Lives and did a tremendous job. There was another group of students a little bit older than them at that same summer, mostly white students, who tried to, who stood on Central Street every Saturday to engage white people in the conversation about racism and what their role is. So those are just a couple of examples of millions of examples, I'm sure. And on a personal note, it's just been such a privilege to get to know you and to work with you and to just, your energy, your enthusiasm, your love of decaf coffee. You know, we share a lot in common, but I feel so grateful to have you as an example and that leadership. And what you've done, again, especially for my own children and for all the children that have crossed through this building in the last 16 years. And when, the night that we were, you were announced your retirement, I text, I did a family text and I said, this is it, guys. Dr. Witherspoon's retiring. And within a second, my son, who is now 26-years-old, class of 2014, texted me back, he says, Mom, make sure whoever the new guy is, or person, I'm sure he was more appropriate. Whoever the new person is gets to know the kids and talks to the kids every day like Dr. Witherspoon did because he really knew us and he really cared about us. And that was the most important part of his job. And he was right. And luckily, we did hire the person who's going to be right there. But I do want to just thank you for the incredible legacy, for this incredible foundation that you've gotten, that you've established for us. And we've done a lot with you. But keep watching because I think we're going to continue to build on what you started. So thank you for everything.
Thank you. That was so nice. Thank you.
Wow, I just am blown away by all the words of all of you. So thank you for sharing such heartfelt words. I hope you feel it as well.
Do I get to say something?
One second. Okay. I have something here from Larry Sufferton, the Cook County Board Commissioner. And there's a really beautiful resolution...
Oh, wow. How nice.
...that he wants to present to you. And I, you know, I'm not going to read it all because you could see it's a lot of words. But it is absolutely beautiful. Whereas Dr. Eric Witherspoon, superintendent of Evanston Township High School, 202 since July 2006, will retire at the end of the school year. He calls you a lifelong educator. That you have, he makes reference, he just summarizes all the work you've done, that you've served as superintendent for over 30 years. 30 years. Can you imagine that? 30 years. That your work around equity and anti-racism are the hallmarks and foundation of your superintendency. And we've all seen and heard just so many examples of how that impacts students and really our entire community. And you keep getting these because people see this as impacting our community. I love the conversation around the water cooler at Northwestern. I'm like, whoa, that's powerful. You know, your push for equity and education. And this is important to highlight as well, that the increase during your tenure of ACT scores has just been higher than ever. That we've consistently been recognized by U.S. News and World Reports and The Washington Post as the top 2% to 3% of the high schools in the nation. And I think that the work that you've done around equity is really important, but it's really also important for people to see that the work around equity is also the work of making a school truly excellent. And you have just demonstrated that. And now I think it is, people are getting it. It takes so much time, but people are getting it. And even through the global pandemic, and he makes reference to this, that you continue to work and just hold to your values. So I'm going to present this to you. This is hugely important.
Oh, wow. That's very nice. Thank you.
Yes, it is. And I've got one more thing before you speak. From the board, this is to you. This is your pen. It's a little bit bigger than a pen.
Oh, my gosh. Oh, wow. Should I open it?
Yes. Yes.
Well, the poundage is definitely worth something. Oh, my gosh. Well, I see the word crystal already. Wow. Is this... No. Okay. I want to get it right. Oh, my goodness. It's gorgeous.
Beautiful.
That's beautiful. Wow. Well, don't worry, that'll be one of the most prominent parts of our house. I guarantee you that. Thank you. Oh, my gosh, it's all etched and everything. You'll all have to look at this. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, now you get to speak.
And unlike a typical superintendent, my remarks are going to be very brief. To each of you, a heartfelt thank you. And I mean that sincerely. I didn't expect such touching words and from every one of you. You know, when you're in this kind of job, it's not an easy journey. And I know Marcus is very aware of, you know, that's going to be the case as he moves forward. But to have people take the time to speak so kindly and to recognize that it has had an impact means the world to me. You know, something I realized as this was going on is you really don't get a dress rehearsal for retiring. You do it one time. I guess, I have a hunch I'm not going to completely stop, but, you know, to have a complete career retirement is a once-in-a-lifetime thing. And I want to say to all of you and to those board members who came before you, who were the ones who were so supportive and kind, I could not have done with this without you. And I know that. No superintendent can. And I know that it took courage of you and of some previous board members to really make that possible. And it's been the blessing of my life. And I thank you. Thank you, everybody. You've made it very special.
All right, so we're just going to take just a quick break. I know that the hour is late, so we're not going to take a lot of time. I know that we've got this person over here who's dying to give this budget report.
That darn financial stuff, you know?
So we'll get to that. But let's take like maybe 10 minutes, get a piece of cake, and then we can...
Okay.
Good idea, cake and...
Cake while we hear... Mary, Mary, eat cake while we hear your tour. Yeah.
I think I can make a cake.
All right, welcome back everybody. The next item on the agenda is comments from the public. Dr. Beavis, do we have any comments from the public?
We have no comments from the public this evening.
Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda are FOIA's listed. You've listed a few.
Yes, we have one from Hernandez, two from Meadows, and one from Lansbury, and the responses are in your packet.
Thank you. All right. Next item is board committee reports. Are there any board committee reports to share tonight? No? All right. All right, so we are at the superintendent's report.
Well, it is short primarily because we are in the midst of summer break. But a couple of things wrapping up regarding the end of the school year that are really, I think, worthy of mentioning. We did have an annual scholarship night. It was held virtually, and if anybody wants to go back and find that link, they can look at it. So Timothy Russell and Jacqueline O'Carrolli were received the senior honors from the Women of Evanston Youth Award and the Oliver Beatty Cunningham Memorial Prize. They were honored by all their peers who chose them as the top two seniors of their class, which was a lovely honor and really well deserved from both of these young people. Also, we have Sophie Lammers and George Wyler, who were named National Merit Scholarship winners. And to make it all the way through that to the top fraction of a percent of those who are in the, you know, competing in the program is really an honor, so congratulations to them. We had a ETHS team compete in something called CubeSat. This is a fairly new challenge where teams are to design, build, test miniature Cube Satellite prototypes, and that's why it's called CubeSat. It really has a national recognition. And in this inaugural challenge, one of our teams was one of the six teams to be honored in the final presentations. So again, this is like a big national deal, and I'm not surprised at all knowing how our students achieve. And finally, I just want to point out that summer school did start on June 2nd, so we've been underway now for a little bit of time since last week. And if anybody has questions about summer school or office hours, all of that's posted on the website. But summer school will take place until July 31st, and we will serve well over 1,000 students in our summer school in the two sessions. So very exciting. And that concludes my brief report.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Witherspoon. All right. So now we are at the finance committee report, and Mary Rodino is all set to lead us.
I was so eager, I forgot there were other things on the agenda before, like those last few things. Sorry about that. I was thinking it was just me and then end of show. Okay, so I'm gonna keep this short. I'm gonna jump right in. This is my final annual budget presentation to you all. I will still be here in September, hopefully sitting next to someone, and I'll just be the assistant at that point. But considering everything we've been through financially in the last couple of years, I think that we have a good tentative budget to present to you to start the year, and then we'll have some more defined answers in September when we come back with the final budget, but I'll get to that in a minute. So I'm gonna jump right in with a financial overview. No real different news from the state. We expect that our state funding will be pretty level or flat. We have still keep a couple items in the background: property tax freezes and pension funding shifts, but we've not really heard much about those in a long time. Our primary funding source from the state is evidence-based funding. We're expecting that to be flat, and it's just under $3 million. The corporate property replacement tax actually turned out to be unexpectedly higher this year than, well, unexpectedly, so higher than we expected. We're not quite sure what that's gonna look like next year. Apparently, there have been some different formula calculations that are going into this revenue, but that also funnels through the state as well. And so we have increased the budget for this revenue quite a bit in fiscal '23, but the final allocations have not yet been given out. So again, we are always thinking about a potential property tax freeze or pension cost shift, and possibly the future of evidence-based funding. For right now, we're flat, and that's the best-case scenario for our evidence-based funding. So as far as economic concerns, I'm sure you all know this, but in Cook County, our levy is a mix of two years, and the previous CPI, which determines part of our levy, was 1.4%. That was announced in January of 2021. And then with everything that happened these last months, the 2022 Consumer Price Index will be, is 5%, so that's what our future levy will also be based on. Of course, if there's a property tax freeze in the future, that could cancel out those increases, but we've not heard of anything on the immediate horizon. But one thing I think I mentioned a while back that we do know is that property tax due dates in Cook County are gonna be really late this year. And I would say that makes me a little nervous, but it's one of the reasons that we really always talk about conservative fund balances so that we can get through those difficult situations. And I read today that taxes could be due possibly up to six months late. And that's really where I think our district will hit our discomfort level. There are short-term borrowing options, and we'll be fine, but we just don't really like to have to go to that length if we don't have to. So just to get to some numbers quickly, the tentative budget for 2023 is about a 3.5% increase overall from last year's budget, and it's just over $99 million in total. That includes everything: bond and interest, IMRF, and capital. And then we talk about the operating funds, which is really the funds that we use to operate the school on a daily basis. That budget is just over $88 million, and it's a 3.2% increase over last year's budget. And this does include in the operating funds a small amount of the federal relief funds for some of those, a couple of positions that we spoke to you about in May. And the rest of the federal money is really allocated for those capital projects that we also discussed. And so the increases are mostly due to personnel costs. So we try to always have conservative revenue estimates. I think this budget does that as well. Evidence-based funding, we always plan for that to be flat unless we hear something else. And our categorical state aid is not huge these days because some of those things were rolled into evidence-based funding, and that's mostly flat. But it's also mostly reimbursement. So for spending on, for example, special ed room and board, it would be a reimbursement for eligible costs under that grant. And then in this budget, the federal aid did decline, but that was really because last year reflected some of the ESSER funding. So again, I already mentioned property taxes are a blend of two years, and payments will be late. And corporate property, personal property replacement tax has been higher than we saw the previous year. So we have no plan to increase student fees in '22-'23 school year. You might remember a month or so ago, we requested a parking fee increase from $300 to $400 for next school year, but we'll be making some allowances for student, for students who are eligible for free or reduced lunch. I believe that was a 50% reduction for that, for a student who's eligible for that. And we had no summer school fee increases for this summer, and many of our students are subsidized in their summer school classes. And you might remember the last couple of years, we actually had many no-fee summer school classes. So just real quick, no surprise on our revenues. 83% come from property taxes, and then you can see very small percentages for all the other types of revenue that I just talked about. And expenses, again, no surprise, the large number of salaries. The next highest green pie slice is fringe benefits, so the two of those things together are about 76% of our overall budget. So salaries overall are increasing about 3.76% due to some of the employment contracts that we know about, and some that we're anticipating, and then expected salary increases for non-union employees. But I think that's a pretty reasonable increase overall. We had a few retirements, but we had a few additions, so a lot of things are kind of balancing other things out. And of course, with us still having some contracts that are currently being negotiated now, we'll know more about what these numbers will look like in September, so that's why we come back with a final budget at that point, because we have a little more information about some expenses. Just a quick rundown, nothing out of the ordinary here. Fringe benefits are increasing by about 3%. Supplies and materials, tentatively, we're budgeting that those actually will be pretty similar to last year and even decreasing slightly. Purchase services, we actually were able to plan for a decrease of almost 5%. Again, we'll come back with some refined numbers in September as we are starting to see how things are costing out at that point. Capital outlay, but this is just talking about capital outlay in the Education and Operations Fund. That's decreasing by 38% because last year, we did have some federal funding for a project in that, in that fund. And then tuition is increasing by about 35%. This is mostly for special ed days, like a special ed day programs and special ed room and board. And that has increased, but that dipped for a little bit during COVID when we didn't have as many placements. So again, we should have some better numbers as the school year starts up next year, and we can refine that if we need to. I don't expect it to go up anymore, and a lot of those costs are actually reimbursed through state funding. So just quickly, the Education Fund is just almost a 4% increase over last year. I think that's pretty reasonable considering what we're experiencing in some costs right now. Operations and Maintenance Fund is actually a decrease from last year, but we had some of that federal aid budgeted there, so it's about a 7% decrease from last year, but pretty much on par with the same types of expenditure, of spending that we see in that fund generally. So just a reminder, we typically talk about values-based budgeting, and we try to maintain reduced levels for contractual services, supplies and materials, and any types of personnel attrition if a position didn't need to be replaced. We always look at instruction as a top priority, so anytime we are looking at reductions, we try to keep those out of the classroom, and also try to maintain the student-teacher ratio and avoid layoffs. So kind of the same things that we talk about every year, we'll continue to monitor the state's condition, financial condition, look at installing capital projects that can reduce, like some operating and energy costs, improve our sources of energy, continue with some wellness strategies and reorganization if needed, if any funding is in jeopardy. If down the road, the enrollment declines and the state starts to reduce our evidence-based funding, then we would also, or if a property tax freeze or pension shift comes in, we'd have to really kind of reexamine some things and see where we can make some reductions. That's really what we call our Plan B, though. And just to, here, where we go from here, in the last week of July, our first week of August, we'll publish our budget hearing notice for the September 12th budget hearing. We'll have some updates on property tax, new property estate update, and all the things that I mentioned in the previous slides. We'll give you a balanced budget request and property tax and final adjustments, and it'll also include additional sections that are not in the tentative budget. This is really a document intended to get us started, and then we add additional analysis in the final budget. That's it. No surprises. Probably less surprises than I expected. We were able to pay for increases that we felt like we'll have out of the property tax increases that we'll have. We don't have a lot of other substantial sources of revenue here, really, so we have to kind of live on what the property taxes will allow us to receive, so. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary. Any questions? Comments? Pat?
Not a question, but I know we'll get an official opportunity to thank you in the fall, but just because you just gave us your last budget, again, we always tease you, the late hour, the long documents, but Mary, what, no school district in the country, they would just do anything to have you as their CFO. You are amazing. You've done such a great job. I mean, through COVID, all those scenarios you sent us, from the world is ending to we make extra money off the, you know, it was just, you just always stay level-headed and do this work that allows all the other work to happen. And I just think we always need to remember that connecting the dots that we couldn't do, all the fabulous things we talked about tonight with Eric, if you hadn't been here to pay, make sure we had the money to pay for it. So we just can't thank you enough.
Thank you. That's why I teased the track coaches about the new blue track. I don't know if you guys remember, but we were sort of in the middle of that when COVID hit. Like, it was already planned and bid out, and we're like, what do we do? So capital's tough. It's tough here with the, with the laws in Illinois and the limitations. It's not easy, and unfortunately, you know, we're gonna have to fix a lot of bricks and mortar, and that's not gonna be fun. But I think that the board has been so supportive and so conservative when it comes to just being smart about the money, that I think we've been able to ride out some of these crazy times. And I remember that spreadsheet you're talking about in COVID worst case and medium case, and, I mean, things have, have been okay. Okay. And this is one area that I'm kind of happy can be boring, you know, because it's probably a good thing. And I'm not always this calm in my office, but I'm usually calm about the budget and things like that, because I know in the long run, those things will work out. It's more like the little short things that pop up every day that are, that make me crazy. I want to go into it, but, but thank you. And I know you said every school, you said you had a question, but then you said every school district in the country might-
I didn't have a question.
Oh, okay. I'm like, I'm not looking for a second career, so that was not an advertisement, but thank you.
Well, if you were, believe me, there would be lots and lots of people out there.
They say I'll be bored in a few years, but we'll see. So, thank you.
Well, you deserve to be bored, then.
I do deserve to be bored a little bit.
You want to be bored, yeah. I know that, I remember that meeting when you gave us the worst scenario or the possible, all the possibilities, and I was holding on to every word you said because I have such trust in you and your work and your predictions, and you just came straight with us. I enjoyed, say this, I know, I kind of had a little extra time this weekend because the weather was so bad, I didn't do the yard work I wanted to do, so I went through the budget, and I really did enjoy going through the 162 pages because I felt like-
162 pages?
Yes. I felt like I could, it helps me really understand what's happening at ETHS. That's what I liked about it. I like it when everything is right there together, all the departments, the goals, and how department leaders are thinking, and connecting to the district vision, and then how we make decisions on what we spend our money on. I just thought, I just think that gives such a complete picture, and it's helpful. It's really helpful. I know it must be a bear putting that together. I can only imagine how you get all those people to cooperate with you, meet the deadlines, do it in this format, you know, whatever you need to do, it must really be.
And this year, it was while we were negotiating multiple contracts, three at once, one waiting. And I'm also managing construction this year because our construction person retired, and I said, I'll do it. So this has been, I'm thankful that I'm, that I kind of have the routine down, because once I was able to balance the numbers, the routine part, I could kind of do without thinking so much. But it is, it's a comprehensive document on purpose to be transparent, and I do feel like it is.
Sure. Yeah.
It's a labor of love slash hate.
Okay. Just keep it quick. Just one maybe thought, and this has probably been thought of already, but parking, you know, we're talking about revenue, and I would love to see our students who receive any financial aid have full parking covered, not just 50%, because if I did the math, it still seemed to be around $200. Just a thought.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's move along on our agenda item. We are under Items for Action. The first item for action is the approval of the tentative 2022-23 budget. Could I have a motion, please?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Anthony?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Rova?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. The next item is the Consent Agenda, which consists of approval of agreement to furnish food service to Community Consolidated School District, School Evanston, Skokie District 65; approval of carpet replacement contract; approval of minutes from May 9th, 2022, regular meeting and closed session; approval of bills, treasurer's report from April 2022; and personnel report, which consists of approval of negotiated agreement for the custodial maintenance staff.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, thank you. The next item is old and new business. Does anybody have old or new business that you'd like to bring up? If not, can I have a motion for adjournment?
I move re-adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much.